I wanted to take the opportunity first to thank everybody for joining us for this meeting today. This is the first of four meetings, Zayis, or the version two meetings that we're going to have for our consolidated plan. So what is our consolidated plan? This is a five-year plan, strategic plan, that we have for the city of Brockton, so where we try to set goals and aims to improve on everyday life, or not everyday life.
Oh shit.
Alright, there we go. To improve on the life, the work, and everything of people in Brockton. And so I wanted to first start with some of our programs. I know people looked at pictures, so where do I start with pictures? Because everybody loves pictures, okay? So these two pictures, or these four pictures here, are from NeighborWorks. And so this first one here is going to be 1,200 Montello. I believe that's on the south side. I'm sorry, I'm not a Brockton person, I'm a transplant. South side. And it's going to be 92 units of housing on the south side of Brockton in the Montello neighborhood. This one, Campello. Campello, there we go. This one right here is 121 Main Street. This has 48 units of housing, 11 affordable housing units, and then it has Brockton here on the first floor. This is on the end downtown between Main Street and Frederick Douglass. This one right here is going to be Hotel Grayson, well, it is Hotel Grayson. This is also a NeighborWorks project. This is going to be 18 units of housing with commercial space on the first floor if you drive by it, which I suggest, strongly suggest. They pay to have a local muralist paint a mural that represents Frederick Douglass and the abolitionist movement and the bodegas. It's beautiful on the panels that are on Frederick Douglass Avenue. It is a wonderful display. They maybe want to paint all of our abandoned buildings with a mural. So if you haven't driven past this, this is at 28-31 Frederick Douglass Avenue. So I would strongly suggest you drive by it. We also have in the pipeline things for Petronelli Way. It is off of Franklin and Petronelli, again downtown. So this one right here, if you have the opportunity to come up and look, it is going to be called Riverside Residences. This will be New Vision Enterprises. This one, Zayis, 50 units of housing, all market rate, commercial space on the first floor. They are anticipating starting this project in the spring or summer of 2023. I do not have a completion date, but as soon as I have it, I promise to follow up with everybody who signed into that sign-in sheet that Zayis has. If you put your contact information, I'll let you know when they anticipate to have this done. Well, the VRA is more than just development. We also have some programs that are tailored towards homeowners and renters in some instances. So we have a lead program and a homeowner rehab program. The lead program is led by Daniella. Right, okay. And it provides funding towards the deletting of the aging housing stock. Homeowners and farm renters. I can't tell you the exact amount that you're... Children under six are safe in their homes. Elderly populations are safe in their homes, but everybody in general has the right to live in a home that is free of land payment as it has been deemed a housing. So we do have this program. It has a revolving application process. And if you want to hear his contact information, he's sitting right there in the room. And so this, like I mentioned, we also have the homeowner rehab program to which low, moderate income individuals are available, are able to apply for this program and get much-needed repairs on their home to improve on the living conditions that they experience. And so hopefully you guys came up and looked, and these are some of the before and after pictures of a home that was completed at 67 Pine Court Street. This is again a revolving application process that we have for this program. Even though the program manager isn't here, I'm still going to direct you to Daniella, because a lot of what we do is dual construction for lead and homeowner rehab. So any questions that you may have, she is your point person for this. But this is another program that we have to be able to improve on the quality of life for the residents in the city of Brockton. So even though we aren't solely development, a lot of what we do is development. And we have quite a few developments coming online. One of the ones that we have is Thatcher Street Housing Development. That is behind Massasoia, correct, Zayis? Thumbs up?
Yes.
And I believe this is in excess of 90 units, most of which will be... Not affordable, most of which will be market rate, but they also have some set aside. Excuse me, they have been in talks to have some set aside for condos. So we are trying to push very strongly towards homeownership in the city. We want the residents of this city to be just as invested in the city as we are. And what better way to own a home in the city, to own a condo in one of these newly built developments? Past projects, we did the Petronelli Way Garage that was named after former mayor Bill Carpenter. And so CDBG funding went into this to create this garage. I cannot tell you off the top of my head how many spaces are in this garage, but if you see Zayis after this meeting, he has all the numbers for you. I work with Zayis. Our CDBG grant also does, yes ma'am?
Sorry, I was just going to ask about the CDBG grant. Is there one coming up?
Yes ma'am, I got you. We work right on it. So our CDBG grant, we do a lot of public facility improvements. We also do a lot of public service improvements. We, some of the people who come to us for CDBG funding include nonprofits, the police station, most of the nonprofits in the city, Charity Guild, Father Bills and Main Spring, Family Community Resources. We are able to provide much-needed assistance so that they can carry out the missions of their organizations so that they can service the people. This is not a growing application. Applications begin to open towards the end of January and close right at the end of February or the beginning, excuse me, of March. Chara is, Charlize Isaac is the program manager for this program, and she's currently in B.C., attended a training. But I can provide her contact information if anyone has any further questions. But a lot of what we do is able to come from the CDBG funding. It allows us a flexible pot of money so long as we are servicing low-to-moderate income individuals, families, low-to-moderate income areas. Through our CDBG funding, we also have the opportunity to improve on public parks and playgrounds. We also provided money for the Downey Playground. Renovations will be underway for that playground here soon. And we have our receivership program. So what is the receivership program? Receivership program is a program that we have that takes abandoned dilapidated buildings and we rehab those or redevelop these properties. And then that enables us to provide these newly redeveloped properties to first-time homebuyers. It is a program that was not utilized during the COVID period, but it is something that Zayis feels very strongly about, and we will be bringing that back to the forefront to get some of these, some of these properties back online and change the scape of what these neighborhoods look like. The home program. So the home program is reserved for what Zayis and my former executive director call brick-and-mortar projects. So the home program is about development. We provide funding and any works for development. In return for the development of these projects, we receive home units. And what is a home unit? A home unit is an affordable unit that the developer is required to keep affordable for an affordability period. This affordability period depends on the amount of home funding that they received to develop this property. For example, if you come to me, and I'm just throwing out another, if you come to me for, or Zayis, excuse me, not me, if you come to Zayis for a million dollars in home funding, please expect to have a 45-year affordability period. What this does is protect this unit, it protects the residents there so that you're not just taking this, this funding and keeping it affordable for two to three years and then flipping it back to a market rate unit to which people are not able to afford. The home, the home program has very strict and strenuous guidelines, but it is invaluable to the development of the city. We also have a, through the CDBG program, we have the small business development program that we have that is overrun by Kelly, who's there in the middle. What this program does is provide much-needed assistance to small businesses in the city of Brockton. They link them to different partnerships that they need. They link them to different support systems that they may need. They connect them to the small business, excuse me, small business loans that they may need to score. They provide them with training opportunities, they put on workshops, they attend everything. They are in this city trying to help small businesses develop themselves so that they can become more marketable to consumers and more profitable for themselves. Through this program, we also run the facade improvement program that is also run by Kelly. And so what this facade program does is it provides assistance with renovations to the exterior of some of these businesses. You increase your curb appeal, you increase the traffic that comes into your business, and in turn, hopefully, you increase the profit that you have to your business. This facade improvement program loan is a no-interest, no-payment loan payable only upon sale, refi, death, I'm sorry, I put it out there, transfer of ownership for this property. So it is a wonderful program that is not utilized as much as we would like for it to be, but it is wonderful and transforming what these small businesses have to endure, especially, like I said, improving the curve of it. Which leads me to the next one. These pictures over here, if you have the opportunity to come up, these are some of the businesses who have received this facade improvement program loan. Questions? Yes ma'am?
Oh, no.
No questions, okay. Oh, yes ma'am?
Is there a wheelchair accessible, handicap accessible, like any of these public developments that have accessibility like that?
Yes ma'am, so the developers put in accessibility for a wide array of different, developmentally different persons, whether it's wheelchair accessible, whether it's hearing accessible, whether it's visionary restrictions. It all depends on which development you go to. I can't tell you specifically that every single development that you have up here is going to be... Every single development has wheelchair accessible, yes, there we go. Because that is at the baseline. With the different levels of accessibility, you can speak to the project manager or the leasing manager, excuse me, of these different properties, and they can tell you all the different accessibility options that they have. But all of these programs that receive funding from us are wheelchair accessible at the baseline. What else?
So I'd say, in the future, is there, is there plans for expanding more affordable options? Because obviously, like a lot of, like the pay of the majority of people is not on the car with market rates.
Yes ma'am.
What kind of plans in the future do we have for rental housing?
Yes ma'am, so I would say from our standpoint, one of the conversations that we had with everyone when they come in for funding for us is to see what their affordability looks like. Affordable housing is something that we currently need, we needed in the past, and something that we're always going to need. The costs are rising. Now, what affordability looks like is dependent on the variables for somebody's income. Affordable to me may not be affordable to you, may not be affordable to Daniella. So those are conversations that we have. Excuse me, a lot of it is dependent on what the cost to build is. During this COVID period, every piece of material skyrocketed. I think the cost of wood has transcended from when I came to work today until I'm standing there in front of you right now. So a lot of it is dependent on the materials, the availability of the materials, and what the budget is for the contractor. But these are conversations that we are always having with the developers when they come in. Yes ma'am? I know we got some more questions. Yes, yes ma'am?
So this is an extremely oppressive display of programs, incentives. We have, speaking for the Chamber of Commerce, we have a number of investors who are in buildings now that are looking to develop. At what point should they sit down with you? What types of programs should they be aware of?
So they can sit down with us at any time. The only application that we have that has a strict timeframe is CDBG. All of our other programs have revolving applications. You can apply today, tomorrow, July. The application process will be the same, the determinations will be the same. Everything will be the same. So if someone is willing or wanting or interested and invested, they can speak, sit down with us at any time, right in the office, Monday through Friday, 8:30, 4:30, come see us. Anytime. Yes ma'am?
Can we make an appointment to see her about this? Can we make an appointment to see her?
You're the only one who's going to see us. We're in there, 8:30 pointer. Just come on in and see us.
So I have a question. Several years ago, under the previous administration, there was a meeting in City Hall where I think it was Trinity Construction was going to run up a program to work with the housing court. Because one of the difficulties and challenges we face is people are in apartments, decent apartments, but they have gotten behind on their rent and they're facing eviction. And it was a program where they would have an advocate who worked in the housing court to meet with the families and do mediation and help them figure out a way that they could stay in their apartment, and excuse me, the VRA, they could stay in their apartment in their apartment, they would figure out a loan, whether it was one month, two months, three months they were behind, and try to catch up on that without having to move.
Yes ma'am. So I am going to the birthday of Cindy, who's going to talk. She's headed up the raft rumor of the city that has dished out a lot of bill of money to help people stay in their home. So if you wouldn't mind speaking a little bit on it, put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
So NeighborWorks handles the rental assistance for this whole southeastern mass. And Chiarpoint has as far as housing court. So NeighborWorks actually has housing counselors on Zoom available in filling housing court hearings that when the person is there and, you know, if they're getting evicted, the judge will have them talk to our counselors and they'll explain about the raft and how they can apply or if they have applied, what's the status of the application. So that is happening right now. In the past, the inverse of ministry in Brockton had a specific rental assistance program. They pulled money down from, what's it? It wasn't, it's a bit of it.
My bad.
I think, but it was before.
It was before, yeah. It was home, maybe, but anyway.
But NeighborWorks, yeah, administered to the city to relieve people from renting assistance and utilities, things like that. So there are still programs like that around, but the funds coming up, a raft is still wrong. It goes wrong. So people can still apply.
Chiarpoint with the housing court?
I know from that that there are.
There's also a memorial today at housing. I know we got some questions, yes ma'am?
So you said that this is a five-year strategic plan?
Yes ma'am.
And when did the, how did it start?
Which, which project?
I guess the strategic plan altogether. So it's five years and it started in 2020?
So our five-year plan started 2018, 2017, and is coming to an end. But we're starting the next five-year plan in 2022, and that's why we're trying, excuse me, 2023. And that's why we're trying to get input from the public on what goals we should try to set for this next, because we can say what we think, but all of us don't live in a city of Brockton. And so we're trying to tailor these goals or these measures that we set out to achieve based on the input that we get from residents, from developers, from business owners, from city councils, from elected representatives. That, that's the reason why we have these.
Thank you, perfect. And my follow-up question is, is there going to be designated space for open or collective art to be created and designed? I've been speaking with some artists who are interested in artists in residency.
Yes ma'am.
And looking for opportunities to collaborate.
So that is a conversation that we've had. We haven't had a lot of conversations with artists, but there are green spaces or green links that we are anticipating throughout the city. Excuse me, there are murals, much like the one that I mentioned at 2831 Frederick Douglass, where anticipating different murals throughout the city, on buildings, on bridges. So this is a conversation, we want to make this city more vibrant, more walkable, more accessible, feel more like home to everyone. So if we can collaborate with different organizations, with different stakeholders, with different residents, this is what, this is what we're looking to do. Yes ma'am? I know we got some more questions. Yes ma'am?
So something, it's a very good idea, but something I really value is the mental health of children and increasing more services in schools to... I don't know how it would look, but providing more support for their mental health, especially if they've passed so much of their learning and especially if they experience trauma and everything, so that's something that's always on my heart.
No, I mean, and that's a very good idea. Whereas we at the VRA don't specifically delve into social services, we do provide assistance to organizations who are looking to, for support with social services. So if you know of some schools or some organizations that provide this type of counseling and these type of wraparound services, please refer them to us. We don't want to give out money to the same organizations every single year. We would like to see a variety of organizations spread across this entire city. The city is in excess of 106,000 people. There are countless nonprofit organizations. And so we would love to see some, some new faces, some fresh blood, some new ideas come in. And so if you know of anyone that you think has an organization that's beneficial, please send them our way. We don't go out and try to recruit people, but we don't turn people away because of an idea. We have a very strategic scoring system for all of our funding and everything. So if you know of these different social service agencies that are providing these much-needed supports, please send them our way so that we can have a conversation. We just haven't yet had a conversation with anybody who was seeking funding for these services. Yes ma'am?
One of the things I want to bring up too is like at these types of meetings where we're going to be kind of discussing future areas of development to possibly have like, kind of like a interactive smart board to be able to have a map of Brockton so that we're able to utilize, like have like zoning overlays to kind of like, you know, just have the map and then you're able to click it, and then you're able to see the zoning that is currently in Brockton and areas that specifically are available right now for development. So that we can kind of discuss based on those locations.
Absolutely, and I don't think it's a whole thing, absolutely. And so to piggyback off of that, our next meeting will be March 8th at the Thornton Lee Law Course. We're having our second of our complane meetings, and this one we're providing food, right? There we go. So we would love to see people come out with expanded all of these ideas. And I'll try to make sure I have a monitor, I got your phone number. And so we'll talk prior to this meeting, because I do want it to be interactive. I do want this to be a conversation. I don't just want you, Zayis, not going to talk. So I'll be talking to you at that meeting too. And so I don't want this to just be me talking at you. I want it to be us talking to each other, because I don't live in the city of Brockton, full disclosure. And so I'm open to any and all ideas within reason in order to make the city better and improve on it for those who do live here, work here, shop here, play here. Yes ma'am?
My more general question about just the organization as a whole. Are you part of the city of Brockton government? How are you?
So we are a wazai public organization. So yes and no. We are not a nonprofit, but we also do not work for the city. So we're not governed by the same regulation that city officials are governed by, but we work very closely. We are a grantee of the city of Brockton, excuse me, of Brockton. And we administer these funds with the blessing of the city of Brockton. So we work for them, but we don't work for them.
So your funds come from the city of Brockton?
Yes ma'am, so we're in a little gray area.
Well, that's the federal government, maybe.
Yeah, so God gives them to the city, the city directs them to us, we administer them. So we're like the city's accountant a little bit. Yes ma'am?
Doesn't that also make it so that you're able to get more done because you're in that gray area?
It, it does. We, we don't have as much red tape to cross, but we are still bound by certain restrictions and certain regulations. But we are a little more fluid in the way that we are able to maneuver through the city. Yes ma'am?
I've been seeing buildings go up like crazy, so you guys are doing a good job.
So that is not all us. That is a colla, it's always a collaboration. It is NeighborWorks, it is city council, it is the mayor's office, it is everyone. It is contractors, everybody. We just play a small role in being able to push these going forward. So I would applaud everybody that is in this collaboration, who's building this building. Yes ma'am? Did he hear? Better than you.
I was delayed getting your presentation, the part I have seen is very good.
Yes ma'am?
I'd like to talk to you for a minute about this survey, and maybe you mentioned it already.
No ma'am, I haven't.
How is this survey going for you?
So we don't have as many responses as people like, and that's something that I was going to touch on. So this survey, it uses on every couple of chairs here. This is a survey that provides feedback from you. Everybody is not a public speaker, which is perfectly fine, but you're able to take this survey and you're able to give us feedback on the things that you want to see, the changes that you want to see happen in the city over the course of the next five years. So if you don't have as many responses, we had a pretty good turnout so far, but we would always love, we would always love more. I would love 106,000 responses, but we haven't gotten there.
And when, when does the survey close?
End of, end of this year? End of December 31st? Yes ma'am.
Okay. Have you been on Brockton Community Access Advertising that you're describing?
I believe, so I haven't personally, but Chara, Charlize, who is our outreach, she's wonderful. She reached out to them, I believe. She's done LinkedIn, she does Facebook, she's done Instagram, she's put on the cities, reached out to the city, she's put on the VRA's website, taken that down to the library. So we, we've done a number of outlets trying to get this survey out, yes ma'am?
Good, because of course you know a lot of people aren't on social media.
Yes ma'am.
Okay. And the second thing I wanted to ask you, you've been there a lot of them.
Yes ma'am.
In all these programs that the VRA offers, in your opinion, which one makes the most difference for residents of Brockton?
So I already talked about it. Um, so I would have to say, it's a tie, right? Okay. I can't say which one specifically, because we have the home program that builds housing. We have the lead and homeowner rehab program that improves on the current living conditions. And then we have the C B G program that provides money to these nonprofits that are, um, providing social services to the, or to the, to the people who are living here. So it is a collaboration. The easiest funds to get would be lead or C B G. Home is difficult. I ask for everything except for the blood of your first child. I might ask that too. Um, so I can't say which one is more important because they touch the residents, they touch the developers, they touch the business on, in their own different way. So depending on who you ask on which particular day, you'll get a different answer. So I can't say which one is most impactful because they impact in different ways.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
Is there a list of, um, available spaces that are like a fan thing? Because I've gone to like the city, they're like, they don't have a list, so.
So we have one, um, we have one. It's not always accurate, and I say this because available spaces are, a lot of these spaces that are in the city are not vacant. Um, there's, there's an owner somewhere. So the availability of a particular piece of property or parcel of land is dependent on the cooperation of an owner, a, a clear title of all these other things. And so that's why I said yes, but no, because I don't want to tell you that one, two, three Main Street is open and then tomorrow, the property owner complies with the Board of Health and then that property is no longer available. And so that's, that's probably why they said no, um, because it, it flexes. There, there are a number of variables that makes a property available. Um, and so it's hard to give you a list because it changes momentarily, um, every second, every hour, possibly.
If I may too, the law department for the City Hall, in the past, when we, the city would require property for whatever taxes or whatever, um, the law department YouTube would have a list. Because when, I'm a state senator now, when I was on the City Council, Benny Almody used to be the lawyer who, when they're putting properties up to big fart, you can't sell public property just to anybody, I would go to the bidding process. So, um, sometimes they have to listen to them.
They use a bunch.
Yes, ma'am, everybody wants that lesson. Everybody wants it. Me too. Yes, ma'am?
Speaking of property laws, on large parcel of land that's not here is the C S X, which I don't think we should go about, so.
The reasons. Um.
Which I know there's someone that owns C S X.
So C S X owns C S X. But in that C S X site itself, um, there are a number of owners of that particular piece of property. And so without giving too much away prematurely, talk to me after the first of the year and I can give you a better outlook on what this site would look like. Because it is, C S X only owns C S X. But this particular piece of land, I believe, is like sixty-six acres, and it is divided between a number of owners and their desire to own it, 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 it varies. So it's like, talk to me after the first of the year, I suck at having business cards, but I know my phone number by heart, I can give it to you and my email address. So talk to me after the first of the year, and then we can talk about C S X. I'm on, I'm on, I'm on TV, so I can't say anything wrong right now. Um, before I give you another question, I just wanted to let everybody know that what is not displayed up here is that the B R A is starting in the spring an internship program. And so this internship program will be targeted at Brockton High School, Massasoia, Bridgewater, and then Southeastern Tech. This, um, internship will be targeted towards sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and it will be an economic development internship. What we are trying to accomplish is to expose students to economic development from many different facets. There is architecture, um, there is construction, there's project management, there's finance, there's nonprofit leadership, there's all these different facets. Understanding that college is not for everybody, and that is okay. But there are many different paths to the road of success. But also too, if you do want to go to college, at least I was told growing up, which is why I chose it, in order to be successful, you have to be a doctor or a lawyer. But that's not the case in this day and age. And so we are trying to expose students to a different avenue that they may not have thought about prior to this. Um, this will not be a, hey, can you go file this in the back room type internship. This will be intentional, meaningful internship that we will expose students to a variety of networks, contractors, city officials, um, construction managers, um, so that they can ascertain this knowledge. Maybe they don't want to go into it, maybe they won't. But if they, if we give one to two people who do, then this internship is, um, a success. The threshold for entry into this internship will be very low. We're not trying to count people out, we're trying to include people in. Um, so I will be providing more information, um, as much as we can spread the word. That is what we are trying to do. There are no application fees, there are no nothing. I'm trying to work with the Brockton Area Transit with regards to transportation, trying to work with Uber and Lyft to make sure students have, um, transportation, um, working with, um, the guidance counselors and the success coaches at these different schools to make sure that this curriculum fits, um, their model for their particular degree path or educational journey. Um, but I wanted to put that on the radar, but that is also something that we will be bringing on board in this.
If I may ask, is that a paid internship?
It is not a paid internship at the moment. However, depending on the success, um, after the first year, we could potentially provide a stipend, um, for the individuals. We will be running in cohorts of, excuse me, fifteen to twenty students in the spring, the summer, and the fall. Yes, ma'am?
You might want to see me after I could probably assist with the.
I got my phone number, it might email this number, why not? Do we have any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Um, in reference to what you just talked about, like, there's going to be a cap on how many kids they allow in this program?
Yes, ma'am. So I am basing the fifteen to twenty students on the number of team members that we have because I want to be able to not overwhelm, um, each team member with, uh, a ridiculous amount of students. And I want to make sure that I can rotate them through. They'll be learning about finance, um, development, nonprofit leadership, um, all this other fun stuff. I think it's funny, but I work in the field, so.
Yeah, as far as that being like a certain cap on it, is there any chance that, I know, like, Harvard and other schools have spoken some of their lectures online, that maybe that's something that they can also.
And that's something that we can also, that's something that we can also look at, absolutely. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
Meanwhile, um, we get funding through the Attorney General's Office to pay, um, stipends to teams to work in the summer.
Okay.
So that you might be able to look to them for funding for the summer.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Bridgewater State also has a paid graduate student program. They pay them, some nonprofits, and I think you might qualify.
I'm a college, we're qualified public, so let's, we count the nonprofits, so I'll say.
I can talk to you about that.
Yes, ma'am?
These are so great, uh, I'm wondering, with this improvement district that's being proposed for downtown, a lot of these are in, uh, that district.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have an overlay map that kind of lays out the thirty or forty buildings that are, have either recently, last decade been developed, are being developed, or being proposed to be developed?
I think I might. Um, I can take a look, um, when I get into the office tomorrow, and if I do, I'll, I'll provide that option.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
I don't know if this will be, is culinary arts an option? Or I know it's not.
I know people know how to cook, but I don't know if anybody can show them how to cook, can you expect? At the B R A, I wouldn't trust, um, we have pop ups, let me say, I wouldn't trust them.
Could that be an option?
Um, it's not necessarily something that we do, um, so I don't think it would fit the scope. However, if they wanted to speak to people who have restaurants, who started restaurants, who are into restaurants, I could provide them with their contact information and perhaps that's something that they can do. But as far as the B R A, that is not our image. As I said, we have pop ups.
You have a map?
Did I miss anything?
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah.
So, um, so that is all I have. Um, if we don't have any further questions, we can use this science network. Like I said, I have my phone number and my email memory, so I am more than willing to give it out to anybody or everyone who wants to have a further discussion. So if we don't have anything else, I do very much appreciate you taking time out of this cold, chilly, windy Wednesday, um, to speak with us. And like I said, please, Martin counselors, March eighth, uh, Thornton Lee will be our second meeting. And we, we, culinary, we're not cooking it. Thornton is providing food, um, but we're providing food.
No time, do you have time?
I think it's eleven. So here's the, okay. So we're going to start at eleven. But the first part of the meeting, we have the annual meeting every year to, to talk about everything that was done throughout the year. And then after, at the conclusion of that meeting, we will have our second public hearing for this. And so if I give you my email address, or you give me yours, I can tell you, I can tell you the time. But we're also, um, working on creating a slide that we can see on.